Oh man, here comes Arnie again.
Check this out.
It's Arnie.
What are you doing? You made a mess of my hallway.
You don't need superpowers to be a hero. Help make Hillsborough bully free.
Blossom in the morning is a really great way to keep your teeth healthy and start the day. But when you're through, here's what you do. Throw it in the trash. Don't flush it. There's a problem lots of people don't know called sanitary sewer overflow. A condition buried deep in the ground. Inside a pipe for bedcloths are found. It's a problem we can all help solve. So throw it in the trash. Don't flush it. Baby wipe fender just caught in pads. Paper towels, dental floss clog up bad. Medicines, kitty litter, cotton swabs hair. Throw them in the trash. Don't flush it. It just takes a second to do the right thing. So toss it and let's keep our pipes clean. Throw it in the trash. Don't flush it. If it's not toilet paper, don't flush it. Even if it says you can, don't flush it. If you're having any doubts, don't flush it. One more time, don't flush it.
Is your local business or organization looking to give back to the community? Help keep our roads clean by joining the Adopt a Road program administered by Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful. Keeping our roads clean is a great way for team building as well as exposure for your business. Select the road your business wants to adopt and dispatch a team to remove litter and debris. Participants will receive two signs showing their organization's name as well as safety equipment and instructions for cleaning roads. You can help keep Tampa Bay beautiful by adopting your own road today. To learn more, visit hcflgov.net/cleanhc.
Dave doesn't know his home's flood zone and was not able to heed flood warnings. Dave and his home are soaked. This is Noah. Noah is an informed citizen. He was warned in advance about potential flooding in his area. Noah took precautions. Noah is dry.
And I saved the animals too.
Good job Noah. When it comes to flood warnings, be like Noah, not like Dave. For more information, visit hcflgov.net. Be safe, be informed, know your flood zone.
The official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Welcome to the July 22nd, 2019, public hearing of the Planning Commission on Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Will please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on a specific amendment, please ask, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment sign-in sheet at the rear of the room now. When addressing the commission, please begin with your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant would be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. The applicant will be, the Planning Commission will then ask questions, and the public comment will then be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and a discussion, a vote will be taken. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Powell. Here. Dix. Green.
President.
Joseph.
Here.
Cress.
Marina.
Here.
Willman.
Here.
Thrower.
Wilds.
Here.
Dickerson.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Doughty.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item is HCCPA 18-17, Future Land Use Map Amendment. And there has been a written request that comes from the John Dingfeger of the city council, and the applicant who requests a continuance on this item. Is the applicant here? The applicant is not here, so we will... Do we need a motion from the Planning Commission?
Yeah. The applicant has requested in writing a request to continue this to September 9th. They did not provide a reason in their written request to us, but that is at the discretion of the Planning Commission as this was a notice public hearing.
So, motion.
It's been moved in second that we receive and accept the request.
Who had the motion in the second? Sorry.
Sorry. And Mr. Marina, second. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign "aye," unless there's a question. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So essentially, we're just moving to the next month.
To September 9th. September the 9th at 5:30 PM.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sorry. Are there any other questions? Art, so we'll carry the motion through. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign "aye."
Aye.
Any oppositions? Thank you. The next item, HCCPA 19-01, Future Land Use Map Amendment was continued due to misnotice.
That will conclude the agenda.
And that will conclude the agenda. For the public hearing. Now we'll have the adjournment for this meeting. Then we'll go to the next regular meeting agenda, which has... Thank you again. Welcome to the July 22nd, 2019, regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City/County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation is encouraged. Please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on a specific amendment, please ask, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment sign-in sheet at the rear of the room now. When addressing the commission, please begin with your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant would be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. The applicant will be, the Planning Commission will then ask questions, and the public comment will then be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and a discussion, a vote will be taken. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Powell. Here. Dix. Green.
President.
Joseph.
Here.
Cress.
Marina.
Here.
Willman.
Here.
Thrower.
Wilds.
Here.
Dickerson.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Doughty.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item is HCCPA 18-17, Future Land Use Map Amendment. And there has been a written request that comes from the John Dingfeger of the city council, and the applicant who requests a continuance on this item. Is the applicant here? The applicant is not here, so we will... Do we need a motion from the Planning Commission?
Yeah. The applicant has requested in writing a request to continue this to September 9th. They did not provide a reason in their written request to us, but that is at the discretion of the Planning Commission as this was a notice public hearing.
So, motion.
It's been moved in second that we receive and accept the request.
Who had the motion in the second? Sorry.
Sorry. And Marina, second. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign "aye," unless there's a question. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So essentially, we're just moving to the next month.
To September 9th. September the 9th at 5:30 PM.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sorry. Are there any other questions? Art, so we'll carry the motion through. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign "aye."
Aye.
Any oppositions? Thank you. The next item, HCCPA 19-01, Future Land Use Map Amendment was continued due to misnotice.
That will conclude the agenda.
And that will conclude the agenda. For the public hearing. Now we'll have the adjournment for this meeting. Then we'll go to the next regular meeting agenda, which has... Thank you again. Welcome to the July 22nd, 2019, regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City/County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation is encouraged. Please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on agenda items, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment sign-in sheet at the rear of the room now. When addressing the commission, please state your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chair. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant would be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. The applicant will be, the Planning Commission will then ask questions, and the public comment will then be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and a discussion, a vote will be taken. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Powell. Here. Dix. Green.
President.
Joseph.
Here.
Cress.
Marina.
Here.
Willman.
Here.
Thrower.
Here.
Wilds.
Here.
Dickerson.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Doughty.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item is HCCPA 18-17, Future Land Use Map Amendment. And there has been a written request that comes from the John Dingfeger of the city council, and the applicant who requests a continuance on this item. Is the applicant here? The applicant is not here, so we will... Do we need a motion from the Planning Commission?
Yeah. The applicant has requested in writing a request to continue this to September 9th. They did not provide a reason in their written request to us, but that is at the discretion of the Planning Commission as this was a notice public hearing.
So, motion.
It's been moved in second that we receive and accept the request.
Who had the motion in the second? Sorry.
Sorry. And Marina, second. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign "aye," unless there's a question. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So essentially, we're just moving to the next month.
To September 9th. September the 9th at 5:30 PM.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sorry. Are there any other questions? Art, so we'll carry the motion through. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign "aye."
Aye.
Any oppositions? Thank you. The next item, HCCPA 19-01, Future Land Use Map Amendment was continued due to misnotice.
That will conclude the agenda.
And that will conclude the agenda. For the public hearing. Now we'll have the adjournment for this meeting. Then we'll go to the next regular meeting agenda, which has...
You're going to sit down.
Thank you again. Welcome to the July 22nd, 2019, regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City/County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation is encouraged. Please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on agenda items, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment sign-in sheet at the rear of the room now. When addressing the commission, please state your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chair. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant would be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning Commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. With this introduction, I will ask that Commissioner Marino lead us in prayer and the pledge to the allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with praise, your mighty power, and guidance. We thank you for this day and thank you too for the many blessings in our lives, for our great country, and for the opportunity to live in freedom. We ask your blessings on our leaders, and we ask that you give each one of us here today the wisdom to make the right choices so that our decisions will be in the best interest of the people of Hillsborough County. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready to switch up?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Wilds.
I apologize for being late.
Roll call, please.
Good evening, Powell. Here. Dix. Green.
President.
Joseph.
Here.
Cress.
Marina.
Here.
Willman.
Here.
Thrower.
Here.
Wilds.
Here.
Dickerson.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Doughty.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is the approval of the minutes for the following meetings. The Planning Commission regular meeting from May 13th and June 10th. The public hearing on Temple Terrace Plan Amendments for June 10th, and the public hearing on City of Plant, Plant City Plan Amendments for June 10th. Do we have a motion for approval?
So, both.
Motion by Commissioner Marino. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Green. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor of the minutes as written, say "aye." Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we are, any, next up, public input. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on any items not on our agenda? Okay. No public input. We are on the move to the City of Tampa Plan Amendments. First up is City of Tampa Plan Amendment 19-02. Welcome.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. We'll brief on the Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendments 1902, 1907, 1908, 1909. You will not hear 1910 tonight because the applicant has requested a continuance. So first is 1902. This is a publicly initiated text amendment by City of Tampa staff. We've been working with City of Tampa staff for the last several months to amend existing locational criteria language, mostly for clarity. It's really to clarify the existing process and how we review requests for locational criteria and revising some definitions such as neighborhood commercial is going to neighborhood serving commercial, and we're revising some of the language there. We're adding a definition for street. Some of these definitions are just going to help us review locational criteria and implement these policies through that, through that process. The locational criteria allows consideration of limited serving, limited neighborhood serving non-residential uses in those residential future land use designations. So offices and commercial neighborhood uses. So these, the criteria really wants to, or seeks to focus neighborhood serving commercial uses in specific corridors and specific nodes. If you have any questions, let me know, and that language will be, it's in your packet, and then we'll provide a recommendation in August.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-07.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. David Hape, Planning Commission staff. The next item for your review is, for the briefing, is 1907. This is kind of unique. It's got five sites citywide. The sites are Corona Park, Highland Pines Park, Lincoln Gardens Park, Oak Park, and Sulfur Springs Park. You can see by the map that they're distributed over the entire city. This is publicly initiated by Tampa City Council. The city council has been having discussions, and they realize that there's a large amount of parkland that is not recognized by the future land use, but it is recognized by the dedicated park list in the Land Development Code. So this, the city council has initiated this process. We're working with the Parks Department and city staff, the planning staff, to start the process of getting all the parks that are in the dedicated park list actually into the recreation, open space, future land use category. All these five sites are existing parks. Again, they're in that Land Development Code, Section 16.91 is the dedicated park list. And under this, all the parks would be, all the five in this cycle would be designated that rec open space. The first site is Site A, Corona Park. It is down in the South Tampa Planning District, more specifically, the Palma Sea Neighborhood. You can see here's the subject site outlined in red. This is Corona Street. This is South Dale Mayberry Highway. You can see the commercial uses. This is South Sterling, basically off of Dale Mayberry. Once you're away from the commercial, it's all single-family detached. This is the amendment site. You can see there's two land use categories. The residential tan is the tan color, and there's a small portion of community mixed use 35 to the west side of the amendment site. If it was, if it will be approved eventually, it would go to that rec open space represented by the green. Basically, this is removing the potential for 10 dwelling units on-site or a maximum of 10,059 square feet. Again, the rec open space, future land use category recognizes parks, recreation facilities, greenways, natural managed and cultivated open space. It also does permit private recreation facilities, for one, like the Palma Sea Golf Course, that's under rec open space. It's not exactly public. We can't all get onto that course, but it can be, it is rec open space. So it does allow for those private facilities that are predominantly out in the open. Any questions on Site A?
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, a quick question.
Sure.
Well, actually, two. First, dedicated park list. And I'm admittedly being lazy, but I want you to sort of clarify with that.
In the Land Development Code, there's a listing of parks that basically, and this is what started the whole discussion, because the city council was afraid that the administration would sell off some parkland. And they found out that if there, if it's the debt, if it's on the dedicated park list, there has to be a public vote on it. So, city council was a little nervous about that we weren't providing the parks the adequate protection that would be under a land use category, that they wanted more than just the dedicated park list. So most of the city parks are on that list. The Parks Department is working to get the ones that aren't on the list, like the new Tampa rec facility. It's a public park, but it's not on that list because the Parks Department hadn't been updating it in a while. So they're going through an update process to get that up to speed while we're also working on getting the future land use categories to represent correctly.
I'm sorry. My next question, and so are there any situations where, where there's a, there's a public land use designation that includes recreational open space? And so, does that make it a park, park in perpetuity, essentially? If it, if it occurs in a situation like that where it's, where there's a, let's say a public facility already there?
My understanding that both the rec open space and the public, semi-public offer protections, they're just different type of protections. The rec open space, future land use category, it has to be dedicate, it has to be a recreation facility. It can't be like a sewage treatment plant. Under a public, semi-public, it could be a sewage treatment plant because it's, it's not recreation. So even though it, both are owned publicly... greenways, natural managed and cultivated open space. It also does permit private recreation facilities, for one, like the Palma Sea Golf Course, that's under rec open space. It's not exactly public. We can't all get onto that course, but it can be, it is rec open space. So it does allow for those private facilities that are predominantly out in the open. Any questions on Site A?
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, a quick question.
Sure.
Well, actually, two. First, dedicated park list. And I'm admittedly being lazy, but I want you to sort of clarify with that.
In the Land Development Code, there's a listing of parks that basically, and this is what started the whole discussion, because the City Council was afraid that the administration would sell off some parkland. And they found out that if there, if it's the debt, if it's on the dedicated park list, there has to be a, a public vote on it. So City Council was a little nervous about that we weren't providing the parks the adequate protection that would be under a land use category, that they wanted more than just the dedicated park list. So most of the city parks are on that list. The Parks Department is working to get the ones that aren't on the list, like the new Tampa rec facility. It's a public park, but it's not on that list because the Parks Department hadn't been updating it in a while. So they're going through an update process to get that up to speed while we're also working on getting the future land use categories to represent correctly.
I'm sorry, my next question, and so are there any situations where, where there's a, there's a public land use designation that includes recreational open space? And so, does that make it a, a park, park in perpetuity, essentially? If it, if it, if it occurs in a situation like that, where it's, where there's a, let's say, a public facility already there?
My understanding that both the rec open space and the public, semi-public offer protections, they're just different type of protections. The rec open space, future land use category, it has to be dedicate, it has to be a recreation facility. It can't be like a sewage treatment plant. Under a public semi-public, it could be a sewage treatment plant, because it's, it's not recreation. So even though it, both are owned publicly, that's the difference, basically.
Okay. I guess my, my question just had to do with, you know, again, the permanence, you know, of the, of the open space in terms of how it's, how it's classified in the, you know, as land use.
Well, I think with the city's view is, the, the teeth behind it is that dedicated park list.
Okay.
So, but, they wanted this extra protection. Like, for instance, if, if for some strange reason, the city wanted to sell this off and it's rec open space, all you could do, and then they sold it off to a private company, all they could do was some sort of private open rec use, like a private dog park or something like that. They couldn't build like a warehouse, like a gymnastics warehouse on this site if they were selling it off. Does that muddy it, or?
Well, well, to a certain degree it does, because now you, now you're saying it, it now beca, it could, if it's not on the dedicated parks list, it could become private or a part of a private.
Right. I don't think there's any intention from the city to privatize any of their parks.
Right.
The intention is to get the list to adequately reflect the existing list of parks, the, all our parks that we're used to, make sure they're on that dedicated park list, but also have this backup of having it in this rec open space category. So if, if, if for some strange bizarre reason, that some land use, like right now, this is residential 10. If it was sold off, someone could put houses here. Not that the city wants to sell anything off, but, so they're thinking adding this extra step that is giving some protection, additional protections over the dedicated park list.
Okay.
That was my understanding of it.
I don't live in the City of Tampa, but I would assume that would be comforting for local, city residents.
I'm hoping.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Next one, again, 1907. This is Site B. It's a portion of Highland's Pines Park. It's in the central Tampa Planning District, more specifically the Highland Pines Neighborhood. You can see, this is the entire park right here. There's just one little portion, the western portion, you'll see on the future land use map was not dedicated rec open space. There are schools to the south. This is East Columbus Avenue as it curves under I-4. You have 40th Street, 50th Street, and this is 21st Avenue to the north. It's, there's a mixture. The minute you pass this park, it's mostly industrial on this side, and there's residential directly to the north. Here you can see that portion of the park. Again, this is the entire park here. So we're, we're removing this portion of the light industrial and going to bring it to that rec open space. You have residential 10 directly across the street to the north. Directly south of the park is community commercial 35, and then some higher density res 20 to the, further to the east. And of course, the light industrial by the gray. Here, the entire park would now be that rec open space. Under that light industrial, there is no residential that's permitted, but there could potentially be 157,468 square feet of non-residential uses. That, this amendment would eliminate that potential, and the park would only be able to be used for recreation uses. Questions? Nope. No, on to the next one. Next one is Site C, Lincoln Gardens Park. It's in the West Shore Planning District, more specifically the Carver City Lincoln Gardens Neighborhood. Here we have the park. This is, this is West Boy Scout Boulevard, Loess, Spruce to the south. This is the single-family detached portion of Carver City Lincoln Gardens. There's apartments directly to the west, and there's actually a church right here to the north. The main access point into the park is from West Pomero Street, the residential. This is all office. This is International Plaza Office and multifamily. Here you can see, we've got the residential 10 in the park with the tan directly to the south, and to the west is that regional mixed-use 100. Those are where that apartment, my mouse, this is where the apartment community that we saw in the aerial is right here. Under this amendment, it would go to rec open space, see by the green. This would remove the potential for 25 dwelling units or a, or a maximum of 38,015 square feet of non-residential uses. Any questions? Nope.
We're good.
Keep moving here. 1907, this is Site D, Oak Park. It's in the central Tampa Planning District, more specifically the east side commercial neighborhood. This, we're kind of further to the east. The other park was just over here off the aerial. This is the entire park here. You could see East Columbus, and then with the new section, or relatively new, comes down to 50th Street. This is East Broadway Avenue. A lot of, this is the, probably the last remaining solid residential core of that neighborhood. A lot of East Broadway is heavy industrial and heavy commercial type uses. Here we have the existing future land use map. You can see the subject site and all the properties around it are that residential 20, represented by the brown. To the north, this pink color is east, is the community commer, excuse me, community mixed-use 35. This is East Columbus where it comes down here. This reddish color is the transitional use 24, and then we've got some community commercial 35 over near 50th Street. Again, like the others, this switches off to the recreation open space, represented by the green. This amendment removes the potential for 73 dwelling units or 79,932 square feet of non-residential uses. Questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you. I want to wait to the end for my question, because I, I think it applies to most of them, but.
Okay.
So for the range of allowable uses, and you, you mentioned Palma Sea Golf Club. I think that's a good example, because the, the thing that I was thinking about as you're showing the pieces of, of land is, you know, commercial athletic facilities, like someone opening like a batting cage facility, where, you know, you're, it's, it's recreational, but there's, there may be a significant charge to use that. I've been at parks in the City of Tampa where I've seen tennis clinics going on and reached out to the Parks and Rec and said, you know, is this being booked? And they said, no. So I, I guess my question would be, you know, when this comes back to us, you know, a, a clarification on this range of allowable uses, because to me, if, if a, if a, if a company comes in and builds something like batting cages and bullpens for, for baseball practice, or is building some sort, you know, they're, they're, it's meant to be booked for, say, like tennis camps, that's not really accessible to the neighborhood, or if it is accessible to the neighborhood, there's a charge, well, you create a, a scenario just like with Palma Sea Country Club, where, rightfully so, it's members only, but these are not currently facilities that have that element to it. So I think, just, I don't know about the other Commissioners, but I think it would help to have that clarification. There are ballfields in the City of Tampa that are specially built for tournaments, that when there isn't a tournament going on, anyone can use it. So if that has to be written into the code to make that clear, that when it's not tournament time, these are for public use, and maybe that's already in there. I don't, I don't know for sure. But I think that at least would help me to understand. I don't think, you know, some of these, these are very small. I mean, Corona Park isn't going to become a baseball stadium. But I think that, that type of clarification, if it's not already in there, should be, just because youth sports is a really big business, and we shouldn't be giving up what is considered to be public land just for the idea that we could have tournaments, and then that leaves out the neighborhood from using what is currently parkland in their own neighborhood.
I will bring your question to the zoning and, and the code staff to ensure they have an answer for you. And my, my understanding is none of these are, you know, the, the main gist is to get this completely recognized under that public, and, but I'll let them know your concerns.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
One more.
Oh, one more?
We're not over yet. No, that's all right. The last one, for this round, you'll, you'll be seeing more in the next cycle as well. This is Site E. This is a self, a portion of the Sulfur Springs Park. It's in the University Planning District, more specifically the Sulfur Springs Neighborhood. Here's the subject site right here. This is North Nebraska Avenue. This is East Sitka. Of course, this is the Hillsborough River, and you've got Interstate 275 and Byrd. So it's just a small portion of, of the park up on Nebraska. Here we have the adopted future land use. You could see that portion right along Nebraska is that community commercial 35. The rest of the park is that rec open space. Immediately to the north is urban mixed-use 60, even though it's a big, huge parking lot and not utilized to its full potential. But the red is the community commercial 35. This pink directly across the street is the community mixed-use 35. And then you've got some residential 10 in that tan. Again, here's the park. It would all be recognized under that rec open space. This amendment would remove the potential for 25 dwelling units or a maximum of 64,468 square feet of non-residential uses. Questions?
Questions?
Commissioner Green? I've got to ask this question, because I think Commissioner Moreno brings up an interesting point, at least from what I was, what I was gathering. So if this designation, ultimately, when it, when, you know, when it's clarified in the Land Development Code, allows commercial uses on recreational or public recreational property?
Well, this is getting into zoning, so again, I'll make sure the zoning people are here, and the code people are here to address this. But right now, like, for instance, the Sulfur Springs Park, all that community commercial 35, that allows CI zoning in that, in what it is right now. So if we go back, in this red, if for some bizarre reason, the city was, went against their dedicated park list and sold this off to a private developer, the, in the red, they could get a CI zoning. It's my understanding that the uses are greatly restricted under the rec open space, because you, you know, you can't have, a lot of the commercial intensive are like auto repair, stuff like that. All that disappears. You cannot do that in a rec open space. The only things that we'll get clarification on is those private rec facilities that could utilize the, the, see, the parks will all, they're going to remain public.
Right.
If a private person ends up using it, I mean, that might be an enforcement thing, but we'll, we'll make sure we.
Okay.
Pass these along to the city staff and get some clarification on how they treat it in the code and, and all that, and we'll bring that back to you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-08.
My name is Danny Collins. I'm with the Planning Commission. This is my first public hearing. This is Tampa Plan Amendment 1908. The subject site is in the University Planning District, and more specifically in the University of South Florida Research Park area. This is an aerial of the subject site and surrounding properties. You'll see the subject site, it's outlined in red. Just to the north and to the east, you'll see the University of South Florida campus. This area to the south of the subject site, on the south side of East Fowler, is the Tampa Research Park area. And then this area to the west of the subject site is the university mall. This is a close-up aerial of the subject site. You'll see East Fowler runs east to west, and you'll see Bruce B. Downs runs north to south, bordering the subject site. Little background of the, of the request, this is a private, privately initiated request through the University of South Florida Research Foundation in the state of Florida. This is a regular-scale amendment. It's approximately 84 acres, consists of eight parcels, and the request is to change the future land use from suburban mixed-use 6 to public semi-public. This is the adopted future land use map. You'll see to the north and to the east is public semi-public uses. To the south is light industrial and heavy industrial. And then this portion on the west side of Bruce B. Downs Boulevard is under the jurisdiction of Honor Incorporated Hillsborough County. This area is characterized by light commercial, office commercial, and a variety of mixed uses. This is the proposed future land use map. This is a slide showing potential impacts. The amendment would allow for greater flexibility and intensity in types of uses allowed on the site, and the amendment would allow for recognition of the land by the, by the university. That's all I have. Is there any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Green? Commissioner? Okay. Okay. Commissioner Willman?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I just want to make sure that, I'm, I was trying to find the definition for public. I assume staff has confirmed that they, this would qualify as public ownership. I know there's like nonprofit status, and can, has that been confirmed that?
The, the land is, is currently owned by the University of South Florida Research Foundation. They're a not-for-profit organization, and also through the state of Florida. It's initiated through a private agency.
So since the site is not part of the campus master plan, would there be any, how would, how would it be determined what, what would guide development on the site if it's public? Because there are some, like, the airport master plan, you know, it's public, future land use, but it's guided by the master plan for the airport. But now, if this, I'm just curious, like, trying to understand what that implications would be by making it public if it's not under the USF campus master plan.
Yeah, currently, it's not under the master plan for the university. The public semi-public land use category development on that site would be guided by the surrounding uses and their intensities.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Next up is Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-09.
I'm back. David, David Haye, again, with your Planning Commission staff. The next one is TACPA 1909. This is a privately initiated, it's way down at the southern tip of Port Tampa City, up against MacDill Air Force Base. It is in the South Tampa Planning District. Here we have an aerial. This aerial is kind of deceiving, because a lot of this property in here is not treated anymore. There, it's all under development. So this is, you'll see in some of the pictures, this is all under construction for single-family detached. You can see there's single-family detached immediately to the north and east of the subject site. And then here's the base. MacDill Air Force Base is directly to the south, and then some of their fueling facilities to the south. Here's a picture. You can actually see, that's where a lot of those trees were at over there. So they've actually are building the road currently. And again, this is privately initiated, small scale. It's .81 acres. It's this property on this side of the street. Currently, it's heavy industrial. The applicant is seeking to go to that residential 10, future land use category. Here you could see it's a remaining piece of this heavy industrial down in this residentially-planned neighborhood. Over the years, we're all familiar with, right up against the base, I think there's been 10 amendments over the last 10, 15 years that have slowly been eroding away that undeveloped industrial that was down there for the residential. So this is one of the final pieces besides what the city currently owns. There's some further to the west. If this ends up being approved, it would go to that residential 10, future land use category. Currently, under that existing heavy industrial, of course, residential is not permitted, but 52,924 square feet of non-residential uses, potentially heavy industrial uses, could be located there. This would remove a lot of that potential for non-resident, actually, almost entirely. This would remove a lot of that potential for non-resident, actually, almost entirely. It removes any potential for industrial and any heavy commercial type uses. Under the res ten, neighborhood commercial can be considered if it meets locational criteria. This doesn't meet locational criteria. So basically, there would be no potential, but we always give you the maximums, potential for twelve thousand three hundred and forty-nine square feet of non-residential if it, if it ever met that locational criteria, which it doesn't, or a maximum of eight dwelling units onsite. And this is the street looking north. The subject site is right here to the right off the picture. So any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Oh, and one last thing. Nineteen, oh, nineteen-ten has been continued. And we will bring back your consistency findings and hopefully answers to your questions on the August twelfth public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to other business. First up, chair's business. I don't have anything, so I'll move to old business. Any old business? Okay, no old business. Any new business? Any committee reports? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a, excuse, excuse me. A quick summary from last month's MPO board meeting. As you know, we were deliberating and ultimately had to vote on the, this year's tip. And of course, it was a extended meeting. I think we were there until around midnight or so. But the, the proposed projects in the tip did, did, did ultimately pass. The one thing that, one motion that I made at sort of the end of the meeting was, was for the Hart Board and the MPO Board to, to get together to try and figure out a strategic direction relative to the, what's going to happen with the funding for the Surtax or the, how that's going to progress or proceed, let's say. And that motion did pass, and there is a meeting that's scheduled for Wednesday, August the sixth. I think it's sooner than that. Yep. But it'll be a joint, joint, joint workshop with the, between the two boards. Okay.
That's good. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay, no other committee reports. Okay, then just if that's it, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.